Again, thank you guys for being here tonight. I just want to say this. I love U-High. I love U-High. You know, when I first came here and I did visit and I did the walk through, I think my office was escorting me around. And I went into the various classrooms and I saw the learning that was happening. And I saw just the smiling faces. I saw teachers teaching. I saw just a community of learning happening. I wanted to be a part of this. I fell in love from, you know, you know, it's love at first sight. I kind of fell in love at first sight when I ran into this place and saw a different place. The people, you just felt the community. And since I've been a part of this community, it has been awesome. People ask me all the time, how's it going? How's it like to be at the Lab School? What's going on? What's happening? And I'm, every single time I'm telling them, I love it. It's been amazing. Everyone is so warm. Everyone is so welcoming. Everybody wants to help. It's a community school. I mean, people really want what's best for this school. And I love it. I love it. I love being a part of this. So, part of my first hundred days, guys, I did a lot. I told you I was gonna listen and I was gonna learn. So, I'm gonna take you just through some of that and see what I've listened to, what I've learned over those first hundred days. So, I appreciate it again, you guys being here today. So, the purpose of this is to kind of go through the hundred day plan of what we found, what I was able to find, discuss the current standing in the school, and then to share our vision moving forward for what we want to do here at the Lab School. So, during, you know, I did a lot of listening, right? And so, just wanted to kind of tell you what I listened to and how I just gathered this information. You know, there was a John Hopkins School Culture and Climate Survey that had tremendous participation. So, this was a valuable tool that I used to kind of read through. Our administrative team used, even our foundation used to kind of gather ideas about what people felt about the school. So, we were at over, close to 500 parent respondents, close to 700 student responses, over 90 faculty, you know, participated in this survey. Part of my hundred day plan is I know a lot of you sent emails and responded to the things that I was putting out. So, there's a lot of different emails that I received and was able to read through to get everyone's thoughts, feelings about the school, about things we needed to work on, about some challenges that we had, some struggles that we may have had, and some things that we were doing great, some points of pride that we had. So, it was very exciting about receiving all of this information. Data collection, looking at all of the different, the student data, the student results data, you know, and from everything from, you know, performing on the LEAP exams, from ACT exams, AP, IB program, all these different things. I was just combing through and reading and just trying to figure out exactly where we were in the educational landscape here at U-High. In informal information gathering, I have a, kind of put it all into five buckets on the information that I was using, again, to help, you know, just ingrained in myself, to embed myself into this U-High community. So, kind of put it into five buckets. Obviously, with parents and alumni having different conversations, had many, many different meetings with many different folks, exchanged phone calls and all of those different things. You know, dealing with, you know, Louisiana, because I think we are a broader community because we are U-High at the flagship university. That comes with a lot of responsibility. We not only are tasked with teaching your children, we're also tasked with being a model school, a demonstration school for, you know, the state of Louisiana and even beyond. I got a quick trivia question before we think of a demonstration school. What was our first, in my life, people, administrators, y'all cannot respond, alright? What was our first mascot at University High? It wasn't colors. The first mascot were the demons. Can you imagine that? The University High demons. The demons, any reason why? Why the name was the demons? Y'all have any clue, any idea? Why? Because we were a demonstration school. Get it? Ah, demons, demonstrations. It was a terrible name, but anyway, that's why they changed it. Alright, so, but we were the demons because this school was founded as a demonstration school. Okay? And we'll talk a little bit more about what that means and what it means to be a demonstration school at the flagship university of Louisiana. So, just spent a lot of time with the community. Guys, we have a lot of great things going on with the faculty and community. We're really working with them, with a lot of partners in the area. Also, working with the local school system here, the airport and all some different things. So, there's a lot of great things that we're doing because we're, we want to share our resources. I think our job here at the flagship is to make the lives of everybody that have all the different parishes here in the state better. That's what the flagship does and that's what we're committed to do. So, again, just speaking, LSU is such a huge place. Just meeting with all the different organizations, all the different leaders of the different colleges and different departments has been really great because they are also being invigorated by this, by just the ideas of new partnerships and the way we can do things. Obviously, what I, meeting with our faculty. One of the best things that, that was part of my introduction to the Lab School is that we did coffee talks when I first came in. I brought all the teachers in by greeting levels and we had just different meetings over, over some cups of coffee and just got their ideas about where they are and what we needed to do, right before they went off into the summer. So, that was a amazing time for me to get a good grasp of what our teachers felt like in, that we're here at U-High. Right, so, this is what I've learned. There were three major things that came out as I did all those different pieces, right, looking at the John Hopkins Survey, looking, having all the meetings that we had, all the different, just conversations that I've had, observations, all those different things. There were three things that rose to the top about what areas of concerns or that people had questions about and wanted us to kind of address. So, academics and curriculum, our school culture, you know, diversity and inclusion. So, over the next couple of slides, we're gonna talk a little bit about each one of those. But, what's gonna come out as I have these conversations, I want you to think about these things, is we're gonna go over what our strengths are, what our challenges are, and then what we should start doing more of and then what we should start doing less of, okay? So, strengths, community support. I've talked about that a little bit already. This community supports this school unlike any other that I've been around. And I've been around a lot. I worked at the state department, so I had, I was able to touch a lot of different districts, a lot of different school systems, a lot of different schools. We, the community support that we have here is amazing and phenomenal and second to none. We are, that is definitely a point of pride. That is something that we are very proud of. We are very proud of what our community does to support this school. You know, our K-2 program, I think before I even had the job here, I had a colleague of mine who has children in the school that was in like the third grade. He said, whatever you do, do not fool with K-5. Because they do an amazing job. I didn't understand what he meant at the time, but now that I've been here and spent time here, we have a model in our K-2 program that should be replicated across the state. You will hear every single superintendent, school leader, they will tell you that if kids or our, or don't have good numeracy skills or literacy skills by the end of the third grade, they are lost forever. Okay? It's like, ever. And what we do, by having those two highly qualified teachers in that classroom and the instruction that they provide, is phenomenal. You know, Miss Leon and her team, they do an amazing job of getting our kids prepared. And by the time they hit that third grade, you know, people will tell us, well, you kind of, you're screaming your kid, that's fine, that's good, you know, blah, blah. You know what? I don't want to hear all that because in the kindergarten, I don't care how well they come and prepare, you gotta teach them, alright? They don't know much at kindergarten, right? You know, and they have to be taught. And we do an amazing job of teaching our kids. And that's a model that should be replicated across the state. Student earned accolades. Guys, our students produce great results. We are, at last, I was looking at the ACT report that came out a couple of weeks ago. Our student ACT average for the kids that just graduated last year was 25.4. That's the average. The average, 25.4. That's phenomenal that we're getting kids. You know, people feel like we're, we're not a magnet school, but let me, we could, sometimes people get confused by that. We are not a magnet school. Like here, you can get into the school and not be like a super performing child, okay? We do have super performing children and we have children that are on the board a lot, right? But we get them to where they need to go. But our average ACT scores are 25.4. We had 38 juniors and seniors who scored above 30. Above 30. So, anytime we have about 15% of your seniors class scoring above 30 on the ACT, that tells you you're doing amazing work. You're doing amazing work at this school. We have four national merit semifinals this past year. Four national merits and our finals. That is difficult to achieve. I can't even count the number of academic all-state student athletes that we have. We have close to 100 just without all sports, okay? So, that tells you that we are educating our kids and our kids well. They are performing well and we are very, very proud of those accomplishments. How about our faculty? Every teacher in this school is certified. I must just stop right there. I dare you to go to any school in this state to find out who is just certified. But we're gonna raise it up a notch. Every instructor at this school has a master's degree. I promise you, no school in the southern region has a faculty where every instructor has a master's degree. I dare you to find another school that has those types of credentials. We have about 18 teachers and administrators and counselors who are nationally board certified. I mean, they go anywhere in the country and just walk in and teach. You don't have to worry about any type of certification because they have nationally board certified. That is phenomenal credentials, phenomenal credentials. And I dare anybody, definitely that group, anybody, any school, I don't care what you bring up to them, they do not have the credentials that our teachers have at this school. And you know why? Because they have pride. When they get here, they know, if you, if you come in, first of all, you probably will be hired if you don't have a master's degree, okay? But if you do get here, it's ingrained in your mind. You got two years to go ahead and get your master's degree, okay? And that is what we preach here, that's what we teach here because we want the very best for your kids. You didn't send your kids here to be mediocre. You sent your kids here because you believe your kids are the best and you need to be taught by the best. And so, that's what we're gonna provide to you. Academically challenging curriculum of the whole child. You know, you hear a lot about STEM. You hear a lot about STEM. Here, we add that A in there. We say STEM, right? Because we add that A in there for the arts. So, besides the science, technology, engineering, arts and math, because we want to educate the entire child. Yeah, it's great, you know, there's gonna be those four core subjects, but we also want to make sure that our kids are being given the opportunity to show themselves, to explore different things, to look at the arts, to participate in vocal music, participate in instrumentation, to participate in theater, to participate in a bunch of different things. I mean, our band right now, I'm sure we have some band members in the audience, they getting ready to go to Hawaii to perform for the 80th anniversary of Pearl Harbor. Okay? Those are the things that we promote here at this school, okay? We promote, we want our kids to be well-rounded, well-rounded. And that's what we're gonna continue to support. The foundation board is built to enhance educational experiences. You know, we have a foundation board that is phenomenal, okay? Been around a lot of areas and normally the boards, there's, you know, a district board for the entire parish, okay, that raises money. I've been very involved with a couple of those. And they don't hold a camera to our foundation board. I'm not just saying that because they're here, okay? But they don't hold a camera to what we're able to produce here. Though this year for our annual appeal, this year for our annual bill, we broke every record that we had by raising over $500,000 in our annual appeal. $500,000 for one school of 1,454 kids. That's phenomenal. And all that, and that, we have a great team, a small team, it's great people that work on that team. But obviously, the entire foundations, I look at some foundation board members here in the audience, you know, it takes a collective effort. We have great leadership, we have great support, a great following. And look, when the annual bill started, it was, I was like, okay, we go see how this, this works. And I walked in a lot of Kirk and it was the most festive, wonderful atmosphere that I've seen, you know? It was amazing. It was fun. You know, it was a fun time. And so, it was, you know, and having that, I mean, being able to raise it and those dollars, God, that, you know, we, we don't like, go anywhere with that. Those are for your kids. That money goes right back into the classrooms, goes right back into classrooms. But then this past fall, we have already approved over under the rank in different teacher ranks for things to do in the classroom. So, that money that we're giving, right, that's our use. And that's what those dollars are used for. Challenges. So, we talked about all of this stuff, right? So, now let's talk about some of the challenges that we have here, right? So, the first thing I have on my act. It says perceived lack of challenging curriculum instruction and setting. Notice I have perceived because, guys, I'm telling you, something is out there that says that we don't have a challenging curriculum. And I've heard this because I've actually talked to parents who have taken their child out of their kindergarten, taken them out after being great. And I asked, why are you leaving? And they said, well, they want to get a better education at X, Y, Z school. And my question always is, how do we measure that? I, I, because I just, I want to know, so, because if we didn't prove, we don't prove, how are we married? I get to get an answer. Well, just go in with whatever's good. And that's why, everybody, do what you want with your children, house. But there is a seed lack of a challenging curriculum instruction, okay? And so, I think our job as administrators is to make sure that our parents are well on with the right information, that we do a good job of communicating that information. Because when I talk about, if people say we have a lack of challenging curriculum, then how in the world would we have an average ACT of 25.4? How do we have over 38 kids that have over 30 on the ACT? How do we have, in our dual enrollment, we had 1,224 dual enrollment credit hours? I mean, how, how do we do it if we have a lack of challenging curriculum? So, I know one parent said, well, y'all are wearing uniforms. So, we go and wear uniforms. I'm telling you, I'm not joking. I said, well, yeah, we, we kind of differ from uniforms over here, right? I'm not getting to the uniform distinction in the name. But we kind of differ from uniforms over here at U-High, right? Because we, we want you to express themselves. We just put a U, multiple U-High on it, we're good. Talk about Google level, hey? So, lower retention rates in sixth and ninth grade. Again, those are the two places that we see, when we look at the numbers over, over the seven years, when we look at the numbers, this is where in sixth grade, we lose kids and ninth grade, we lose kids. Okay? So, we have to do a self-reflection and figure out exactly what is going on. Why is that happening there? Okay? So, we know that this is a challenge for us. We need to figure that out. We need to figure out why. We need to get more information and say, okay, what can we do here? And what can we do here to make sure that we're retaining our kids? Okay? Because any, any parent that leaves, I take that personally. I take that as a personal failure, okay? Because I want, we didn't service that kid. Some kind of way. I'm not gonna blame the parent, I'm just, they're just nuts, you know? I'm just saying, okay, what can we do better? Because we don't want to lose any of that. We don't want to lose any of that, okay? So, we're working with that. Need for more partnerships with the LSU colleges, all different departments. We want to make sure that we're partnering with them in all the different areas, in every, whether it's interns, whether it's more skilled teachers, whether it's just the expertise of some of the different professors here on this campus to work with us, to provide us with professional development. We provide them sometimes with professional development with the staff and the faculty that we have. So, it's a give and take and we need to do more of that, do more of that. Need for more diversity. You know, when we look at, when we talk about need for more diversity, it's diversity of a lot of different things. You know, most of the time if you extend the diversity, it breaks. But we're talking about diversity of thought. We're talking about diversity of different religions. We're talking about diversity of many, you know, from higher end, high, I hate using the term third SCS, but you guys know what a low SCS is. I want to, I want to make sure that we have a true melting pot here on the campus, on my teacher's staff, on our administrative team. We want to make sure that I think that we're all together and we have different views and different upbringing and different ways of seeing the world. And we can prepare our kids with the best sense of, to be the best selves they can possibly be. So, we want that. We encourage that. Louisiana school ranking. I can still remember when I, once during my, my interview, I figured we were 18 and I was challenged on that is, like, hey, well, you know, if I said, well, we're 18? We're ranked 18th. So, let me just kind of give you what that means. Because it doesn't, being 18, first of all, I don't think anybody wants to be 18 in anything, right? We want to be number one. If I play checkers, I don't want to be best checker. I don't care. We always want to be number one, right? 18, there's 1,271 schools in Louisiana. So, we're 18. So, let's put that in perspective, alright? Let's put it down long enough, right? 18 out of 1,271 schools. And that's based off of a school performance score, which is a mixture of, it's a formula, it's how they perform on tests, graduation rates, ACT, doing all, so there's a bunch of different things that make up a school performance scores. And when you put all that into a formula, you're like, um, we were 18. So, I put that as a challenge because we don't want to be 18. We want to be number one, okay? We want to be number one in the state in terms of, of, of school rankings, okay? But again, what we want to say is 18 out of 1,271. So, let's put it down long enough. But we never satisfied education ranking. We never satisfied. We always want to be number one. And we're gonna be a demonstration school. We're gonna be the demons and we want to be number one. We want to be number one. Pretty important issue. Here's what I mean by this. We do an amazing job of teaching, all of us do an amazing job of teaching in our classrooms. What we need to do a better job is making sure that we're communicating with one another, collaborating with one another, making sure we have a verbal and horizontal articulation from tend to go in all ways as well, okay? We need to make sure that we have the time, we have the space, the place in order to, by teachers to collaborate, truly have good interaction with one another so that we can see, okay, what are we doing? How are we doing it? And how does it all flow into one seamless educational process? So, now, so, the regional coordination, that's for us as a team, okay? As a school, to make sure that there are 30 people in the right groups together so we can challenge ourselves and that we have that one clear coherent plan of educating our children from 10-year-old all the way to 12-year-old, okay? A formal mechanism can't absolutely be parent-driven, okay? I know we have a lot of these student organizations, but I have not seen just the, the, the right fit for those children to give like a mentorship, like a feedback. And the same goes with, with, we had a meeting last night about parent-driven, alright? But we don't have a formal mechanism that can, okay? We're just, how, what's students think about us? You know, sometimes we forget to even ask, right? Because they're there, they're at the school, you know, so, I understand what you're saying during the middle of high school where the kids, you know, can voice their opinions and, you know, good feedback, so, but, we need to have a good formal mechanism in order for all the organization to follow that. And the same goes for parents. Same goes for parents. We need to create a system, a formal system in order to get, to get their parents to read that, that their information so that we can keep, you know, we keep up our impulse of all our, okay? Alright, so now, listen, learn, alright? So, part of what we're leaving, you know, who are we? You know, who are we? I thought, before I got to the part where we get into the vision, okay, is who are we? And I know that question, it just depends on, on who you ask. If you ask somebody outside of the U-High community, they will tell you, oh, U-High is a private school. It's an elite school. It's a magnet school. You gotta test to get in, you gotta know somebody to get in. That's what people say about U-High. I know you guys, I'm sure, on our hearing, alright? That's what I hear, okay? That's what I hear. And so, but who, who are we truly? And so, in order for us to say who we are truly, I just want to take a look back at who we say we are, okay? Total effort in every endeavor. I'm gonna, y'all want to hear me say that a bunch of times because I love that, first of all. Because it leaves no room for interpretation. It is what it is. It says total effort in every endeavor. So, no matter what we do, we are going to give total effort. We're not gonna give some effort, not gonna give a little bit of effort. Or you say, hey, you're doing this, eh, no problem. No, it says total effort in every endeavor. So, it means that everything that we do, we want to be the best at. We want to give 100%. We want to give a total effort in it. So, I don't care, I like to say that we're a triple A district because we're gonna be great in academics, we're gonna be great in our arts, we're gonna be great in athletics. Sometimes when I tell people that the third grade and athletics, well, education is most important. I say, well, not according to this. According to this, it says total effort in every endeavor. So, until we change that, then we're gonna give total effort in every single endeavor that we do. Everyone. And so, there's five key functions, you know? I know you've had a chance to kind of read, everyone read off this to you. But we want, our first and foremost is we want to provide a secure education for our kids. That's what we're here to do. We're gonna be a model educational environment. We're gonna serve as a center for educational innovation. You know, that's what we want to do. We want to provide PD opportunities for our state's educators and offer, offer those critical teaching experiences. That's who we are. That's our value. Those are our five key functions here at the Lab School. Our values, okay? Our values, implementation of exemplary research-based teaching practices. That's what we do. Values to me means it's non-negotiable. It's not, we don't compromise on any of these. This is what we do. This is who we are. If it doesn't fit into this, then we're not gonna do it. We're not gonna compromise any of these things. Those are our values. That's who we are here at U-High. And so, with that said, I'll tell you in vision for 2025, here we are a demonstration school. And part of, I didn't want to mess this up, so I actually wrote it because I want you to hear exactly what it means to be a demonstration school. We want to create partnerships with all pertinent colleges on a university campus. We want interns from every applicable college to work with us. Teaching is the highest level of learning, so we want to allow other college, other colleges to use us to bring their candidates to the highest level of understanding by teaching our students and working with professors to provide professional development to our faculty. We will conduct symposiums and many conferences to share our best practices. If you are a demonstration school, you are a model school. Those are the things that you do, okay? We, we need to help the next generation of teachers. If you've read anything about teachers in the last couple of years, you know there's a huge teacher shortage. So, how do we combat that? We have to be the best ambassadors to get new teachers, get new candidates into the teaching profession. We have to do this or our people will die, okay? And we cannot go without schools. We cannot go without schools. So, by 2025, and that's what I mean by the vision 2025, that's what that means. By 2025, this is what we are. This is who we are going to be. We're gonna be a school of innovation, okay? We, we, I am challenging our faculty, I'm challenging our staff. And guys, I've been met with, it's like Derek's. been met with, it's like, they're excited. I say, I want us to come up with different, new and innovative ways to do things. We have the license to do this, because we are a lab school, we are demonstration schools. We don't have the chakras on us like a normal school system. We can come up with new and different ways to do the things that we need to do. So forget about everything else you've heard, learned, whatever lesson, get in the room, let's figure out something new and innovative, how we do the jobs that we do. And then when we do that, we produce that, that changes the lives of people all around the state, and if we do it well, possibly around this country. We have a, a team of people working right now on how do we, uh, you know, just reinvigorate all of our STEM educations from K to twelve. From K to twelve, that's what we wanna do, okay? And so we're coming up with new and innovative ways to do this work, new and innovative ways to do this work. So we are, by twenty twenty-five, we're gonna be the number one school in the exam and a global rating school, okay? If we wanna do those first two things, I think it's important that we become number one, the number one rated school in the exam. So that now when we come to sit down in front of people and say, hey, yep, we're number one, we're the best at doing this stuff. So, listen to us, listen to us, okay? We're the best at doing this. And if, once we become, we are the number one school and global school, that gives you just more and more credibility to do the work that we need to do. We create and utilize cutting-edge curriculum and instruction, okay? We're going to be creating curriculum. You know, there's a lot of school system that, you know, they, they get curriculum, the teachers get handout curriculum, we wanna be creating, we have the expertise here to create our, we have the expertise here to create our own curriculum, to teach the standards in, on every, every subject. We just have to give our teachers, again, the time, the space, the agency, you know, maybe they can do it, you have the authority to do this. Do it, we want you to, what do you need, what are we supposed to do to you? Okay? And I'm telling you, I'm having these conversations with our teachers, they are like, it's like Wonder Woman, Superman, they just coming out, okay, cause they're excited about that. It's like, okay, let's do it. We have the finance and resources to achieve at the highest levels, okay? We have to be able to have the money and the funds in order to recruit and retain the best teachers here on the staff, okay? People, you know, sometimes have to retire, people move away, we need to have the ability to bring them back in, we need to have to give them the sense they wanna stay here at the lab school, okay? I think the, I didn't show you the lab, we had state grades of eight hundred dollars this past year, so eight hundred dollars for a year, divided by twelve, or nine, you're nine-year-old teacher, I'm guessing, might be like, always Starbucks, maybe, you know, a month? So, but we need to be able to have the funding in order to, you know, retain and, and reward our teachers for doing an amazing job. I told you their credentials, I told you the results, and we need to make sure that we're honoring, honoring them as professionals. Uh, we are inclusive and diverse, we wanna make sure that we are better when we are inclusive, we are better when we are diverse, we are better when we have multiple people coming from different lenses in order to make the school the best place it can be. We are steam-focused, again, science, technology, engineering, arts, math, we, we all, we wanna be on the precipice of being great, we, we wanna come instant man, look at what they've done over the last couple of years here at the lab school. That's what we want. Lastly, we are U-High, we're gonna always be together, we're gonna always have a great community, we're gonna always have a great tailgate, we're gonna always have fun together, okay? And so, that's our vision. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to you guys to see if there's any specific questions, uh, that you may have.